All right, last one. Um. Yeah. Oh. Yeah. All right. So. Um, let's just start with the first one, we'll see what we can get through. Okay, so you have dydx equals three minus y cosine x. Then it says y is a particular solution, you have a portion of this slope field, they already drew it for you. Okay, then it says. Um, sketch the solution for through zero one. So all you have to do for that is find zero one on your slope field and then just follow the. So zero one would be here. And then I'm just gonna kind of see, okay, it goes kind of like up and then down. And then on this side, it goes kind of like down. And how steep you make it doesn't matter, you just have to kind of follow. So basically, make sure you start at zero one. And then just kind of follow the flow. Of this little field. So just find the point and then just kind of.
Doesn't have to be like very.
No, it just has to follow that shape. Um, another thing, um, does this question? No, it doesn't, but let's say add in like a little separate part here. So let's say that it said. Y equals k is. Or. What is k? This is a really weird way to ask a really easy question. What slope are horizontal lines gonna have? Zero, so then look at your graph, what is your zero? Where are all of your flat lines? You see it? Uh huh, right here, and what y value is that? Three, now look at the slope field, how would we know? That y equals three would make this horizontal? What would happen if I plugged in? Three minus three would be zero, so remember that your zero slopes. Are if you're doing your own slope field, those are the first things that I would draw, so I would say, okay, anytime that y is a three. I'm gonna have a zero slope. Okay, and so then in this case, it says y equals k is my horizontal tangent, what would k have to be then? What number? It's just being great, but that. Tomorrow, uh huh, you're up here, right? Uh huh, and I have her try to, her try to first.
Can you, um, just walk through?
Make sure everybody makes sure.
Make sure somebody, somebody somewhere. I had to make sure that we could like I walked through my computer with the display. Okay, here, go over to the.
Okay, I think this class is pretty small, so we need to come by.
Yeah, I should, I should be up here. Austin is up here.
And Dirk, or he given the test.
I think Dirk is up here, but I think the rest of us may be down there. Tommy should be up here, but I don't know, she may.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll do, I'll do a walk through the hall and make sure.
Make sure.
Yeah. Okay, any questions on that? Kind of weirdly worded, but usually is pretty. Okay, number two or part B, we want to equation the tangent line. So what do we need? Okay, equation for tangent line, we need a point and a slope, what's the point there to gave it to you? Zero one, and then how are we gonna find the slope? Well, get in and then don't forget you have to label, so be dydx. Straight line and zero one. And then you're plugging into your three minus y. So it'd be three minus one. And then cosine x would be cosine zero. Three minus one is two, what's the cosine of zero? One, two times one is two. So then from there, we have our point, we have our slope, we can write our. So it'd be y minus one. Slope was a two. And then x minus zero. Okay, then a lot of times they'll have you write the equation line of the tangent line and then use it. So remember, all that means is you're taking this. So my point two would plug it. Right here. So it'd be y minus one equals two times point two minus zero is just point two. And then what's double point two? Point four and then plus one across would be. One point four, another thing, if you're not good with the decimals and stuff, you could write this. As two times point two and then plus one and you would still get full credit. So especially if this, if the slope is like three sevenths or something weird, don't kill yourself to work out. Okay, part C, last part, we have dydx equals three minus x. Times cosine x and we want to go back to y. Which is the particular solution and we know we have to separate. So. If this is your dydx, what would we do to separate? Uh huh, yeah, so we're starting with the derivative and then we're gonna have to do an anti-derivative back to what we. So where would the three minus y end up if we move it to the left? Uh huh, so it'd be one over three minus y dy. And then your cosine x can stay, but the dx join it. Sine x dx. And then integral, integral. Does either side need use of? Yes, the y, if it was one over y, it wouldn't need it, but if it's one over something else. Then you need it, so what, uh, let's do the right side first, just because it's easier. Um, what's the integral of cosine x? No comes. So we go up to sine x plus c. But then on this side. So. What will our u be? Okay, so it'll be three minus y. Then what's the derivative of that for du dy? Negative one, and then I bring my dy up and then down, so I know that dy is gonna get switched out with the du. I can show you one off the. Okay, and then from there, we're gonna switch out our one over three minus y, now that's gonna be a one over u. Du over negative. And then remember the negative one in the, just move it to the front and it's easier. So then what's the integral of one over u? Lnu, and then in this case, because we had pulled that negative out. Equals. The. Don't forget your absolute value bars. And then, um, before I start getting it by itself, I'm gonna go ahead and put the three minus y back in. So it'd be negative ln. Of three minus y. Okay, so now that we've integrated both sides, we need to get y by itself, there's negative in the front, we can't need to get rid of it until we get rid of. So what do we do first? Yeah, times by negative one or divide by negative one, so now my ln is positive. My y is gonna turn negative, I'm sorry, my sine x is gonna turn negative, but then remember, just leave this field up. Then what can we do? E both sides. So then I have three minus y equals, what do we do with the plus c up here? Uh huh, so it'd be CE to the negative sine x. What would we do next after that? So we'll minus the three across. Notice that's not part of the exponent, it's kind of subtracted behind it. And then your last thing would be to get rid of the negative on the y by multiple. So you would end up with a positive y, c, nobody cares. And then your minus three switches to a plus. Okay, also remember that even if you don't get through that all the way perfectly, you still get a point for separating. And then a point for each integral you did, right? So you could get this point for separating. This point and this point all separate, even if you mess up at the end, it still happens. Uh huh. It doesn't, because remember, c is already a number, we don't know, so it could already be positive. Now you could put a plus or minus in front of it if you want to, but it's kind of. Okay, are we done, is that the particular solution? That's general, and you don't have to label it, but if that's the general solution, then we need to. Plug in our order pair from there. So our ordered pair is f of zero equals one, then we can plug that in to find our particular, so as the zero is one, then one is the answer, what do you plug in? Zero. And then sine of zero is. Zero, what's either the zero? So then I have either the zero is just a one and that's really just a c plus three. Which means my c is gonna be what? Negative two. And then remember, don't leave your answer in pieces all over the paper, you should go back. Full solution. So it would be y equals. C is a negative two, yeah, either the negative sine x plus three. Also make sure that your three stays in the denominator and then it doesn't like sneak up its back. All right, good? All right. Um, all right, next one, let's do. Um, good next one. Okay, so it says to find g of three, what's in your graph? What function? This is f, but they're wanting me to plug into g. So what is g? Uh huh, the integral of f, right? Okay, so that's my relationship between the two. So then I would say, okay, well then if g of x is this integral. Then g of three would be the integral, starting at negative three. And then stopping at the x value they gave me, which is positive three. Of f of t dt. And how will I evaluate that integral? If they give me like a kind of geometric lookie graph like that. The area, so we're gonna start at negative three. And then we're gonna shade all the way till. That's one, two, three. Yep. If you have a graph, if you had a calculator, just punch it in. All right, so then from there, we have this big triangle on top. And then we have this little baby triangle. So let's do the top one first, one half base times height. My base is one, two, three, four, five. And my height is one, two, three, four. Five times four is twenty, cut it in half. And. Okay, and then for your little baby triangle, it'd be one half base times height, your base is a one, your height is a two. One times two is two, cut it in half, that would be a. One, so would your area be eleven? Make sure you subtract, because you have your area on top minus your bottom. Also remember, they could have the endpoint to be backwards, then you switch the side. Well, you subtract and then switch the side, so like if it was, if it was backwards here, it'd still be nine, you just make. Okay, part B is this, tell where f. Or I'm sorry, g is increasing. And concave down, okay, so let's think about if g is increasing. What does that tell me g prime? Kind of, let's just think about the definitions right now. If g is increasing, then what would g prime have to be? Positive. And then if it's concave down, what would they be telling me? Not g prime, but. G double prime, right, concavity is the second term. So that would have to be not positive, but. Negative, right? Okay, so let's think about how we can find those things, remember, the process on these is pretty easy. Um, if you remember, we, if you do a bunch of them in a row, so that, so g of x, I'm gonna write it up here at the top. G of x is the integral from negative three to x of f of t dt. And we know that that area. Then what would g prime be? It's the derivative of an integral. From a constant to x, that was the only thing that happened. If you need help, I don't have tutoring tomorrow, or, or I don't have this AP tutoring tomorrow or Thursday. Okay? And then do you remember what you do here, you just. So now it's gonna be f of x, which is what on this graph? What feature? Cause this is f. So then what would f of x be? A positive y value, so remember, we need g prime to be positive. So we need a positive y value. Because what is this the graph of? So then how would you find f of x? You would look for the y value, right, like what's f of like? Three, you would go to three and then find the y value. Yeah, so remember, when you take the derivative. G to g prime, you're taking the derivative of an anti-derive. Did you remember how you just switched the letter out? Does the derivative and the anti-derivative undo each other and then you just keep the middle, which is just. And this is the graph of f, so it'll be the y, yeah. So we know we need, uh, g prime, which is just the y value to be positive. Okay, then what about g double prime? What would that be? Uh huh, and what feature is f prime? Uh, that'd be the slope of this graph, we would need it to be. Does that make sense? So you just want to remember that relationship, that because they started with an integral. The derivative is the y value and then the derivative of that. Yeah, because remember, we want g to be concave down, so g double prime, which is the slope, needs to be. So then now look at your picture, where do both of those have? A positive y value and a negative slope, you should have two sections of the graph. Positive y values and a negative slope, you have to have both. Okay, zero to two and. Negative five to what's this x? Negative three, yeah. Yep. So for part B, we would say on. Uh, let's write the answer to part B down here. It would be from negative five to negative three, union. And then zero to two. Because g prime, which is really f of x. Is positive. And. G double prime of x. Which is this slope of f. Is negative. Or I guess you could put like. Okay, but the one thing you don't want to do is just put g double prime equals f prime. Because they're wanting you to say what feature you looked at. So you would want to make sure that you say this slope of that. Okay? All right, let's go to part C. We want a derivative. And, uh, h of x is g. Over five x. They want h prime. So that's how we know we're taking the derivative, what rule are you gonna teach? So to go from h to h prime. We're gonna have to take the derivative, is it product quotient chain? Quotient, and remember, quotient is the high. So your high is gonna be. Uh, g of x. And the ho is gonna be. By that. So this is gonna be most, but you are. So then what's d high, the derivative of g of x? G prime. And then what's d ho, the derivative of five x? Fine, and then remember, your quotient rule is ho d high. Minus height ho, so it'd be five x. G prime of x minus five times. Over ho squared is five x. Where. Okay, now notice that they're not gonna look all over your paper for stuff, you have to label it, so if this was h, what would I call this? H, what? Yeah. And you can put h prime of x if you want to be fancy, but as long as you put h prime, that's fine. Okay, then from there, this is h prime at any x that I want. What x do I want to that? It's prime at. So then I would say, okay, well then this is five times three, which is what? Fifteen times g prime of three, I'll find that in a second. Minus five times g of three. And then over, what's five times three in the middle here? Make sure you follow order of operation, so it would be fifteen and ten. Okay, then from here. I already know g of three, I found it earlier, what was my number for g of three that we found in part A? Part A, we know that's a nine. And then g prime of three, I haven't found yet, but I know what g prime is the same as, what is g prime the same as? G prime of three is the same as f of three, right? Cause remember, we had said g prime is the same as the y value, so then look in your graph, what's the y value that? And if you wanted to be super lazy, remember, you don't have to make your answer look pretty, you could literally do this. Fifteen times negative two. Minus five times nine over fifteen squared, and you could literally just leave it exactly like that. Okay, the downside to trying to figure it out, that if you mess up and end up with the wrong answer, they will. So that's why I would say, if it's like a complicated fraction, just don't. Yep. Um, just make sure you know that you have it labeled. Okay? All right, we're gonna skip part D just to do something different, uh, but slope of a tangent line, what do they ask you to do? Slope of a tangent line, they're not asking for the full equation. So then what part do you mean for the slope, just the? Okay, hold on, so maybe we will, okay, so part D, um, it tells you, you have a new function p. P is f. Of x squared minus x. And they asked you to find this slope. What is slope the same as? They're only asking it, now what if they said, write the equation of the tangent line, then you need the point and the slope, right? But if all they want you to find is the slope, we don't need the whole thing. We just need the derivative, does that make sense? So if I want to find the slope, then I just need to take the derivative. Um, so that would be like average rate of change, so remember, if it's a tangent line slope, that's when it's a derivative. Versus like what you said, the y two minus y one, that's your f of b minus f of a over b minus a. That's a slope between two points versus a tangent line, you're just at one. And then what's the x, our x is negative one, so all you would do is take the derivative. What would the derivative of this be, what rule would you, product quotient chain? Chain is right, how do we know it's chain? Because this is inside f, it's not like f of x and then x squared minus x, right? The x squared is inside, so this would be chain rule, so what's the derivative of f on the outside? Keep the middle the same. And then times by what? Minus one, you wouldn't get credit for that, what's wrong with it? Uh, the x is okay, what is messy?
Negative one on the, wait, what, right? Would it be?
It's in the, you don't have to put the negative one. It's easy. It's a notation error, let me change, we did it right. But we wrote it wrong. What are we missing? Uh, you could put that, but that's not why it's wrong, why it's wrong? Has to be in parentheses, yeah, because this says. Times by two x. And then subtract one, that's not what you meant, so they're pretty picky on that, so if you're u in the middle. When you times the u prime, if it's multiple terms, you have to. And then from there, I want p prime to negative. So then I do f prime at what's negative one squared. One, and then I want one minus negative one. That's a plus, which means really I want what, f prime at? Two. And then times, uh, plug in a negative one here, what's two times negative one? And then minus one more. Negative three. Okay, so we got it all the way to there, oops, and then don't forget here, like I did that in my head, but I forgot to write it, don't do that. Okay, just try to make sure that you don't like do things in your head and forget to write them down. Because technically, these aren't the same, I need, I don't put it. Um, okay, how am I gonna find this? Oh. Okay, what's that a graph of? That's a graph of f, then f prime is the slope, that's exactly. So we're gonna look back at f and then find the slope at two. And remember, the only way they can ask you to count the slope is if it's a perfect straight line. Which it is, or if it's flat and you're picking zero. So if I'm here and I picked the next pretty point, which was here. What's my rise over run, I have to go down two over one, so it'd be a negative two. And negative two times negative. Okay? But remember, if they want the equation of the tangent line, then you need a point and a slope, we just only need the slope, because that's all they ask. Okay? All right, let's see. Time maybe for one more, which one do I? Okay, so we have a train, we have the velocity in the chart, what is it measured in? Meters per minute, and then we want average acceleration. Okay, so you have two choices, is it average value? Or is it average rate of change? Okay, how do you know it's average rate of change? And from velocity to acceleration is a derivative, the slope. So we know it's a rate of change because it's a derivative, then we're doing F of B minus F of A over B minus A. They're telling us to do two and eight. So I would put V of eight. Minus V of two. Over eight minus. What's V of eight? Negative one twenty minus V of two is. Hundred eight minus two is six. I'm gonna leave it like that. A lot of times, they will count off if you don't put units. So if this was meters per minute, how would acceleration? Sure. Mm hmm. Meters per minute squared. Okay, so they give you meters per minute, the derivative would be meters per minute. Okay, part B. Uh, did the data in the table support that velocity had to be negative a hundred meters? Between five and eight minutes? Yes or no? Yes, why? Uh huh. So if I'm gonna hit negative a hundred. I would have to, if I'm gonna go from forty down to negative one twenty, what theorem says that? I V T and I V T only applies if your function is continuous. Hey, Ashton, you're not taking disconnecting, right?
No, I'm not.
Okay. It has to be continuous, but they said it's differentiable. Is that good enough? Yes, because if it's differentiable, it's automatically. Hmm, so for part B, we would say velocity. A of T is continuous. And then I'm gonna put because it's differentiable. So if they told me it's differentiable, I know it's continuous. That's the first thing that you check. Second thing you check are the Y values at the beginning and the end. So I find the velocity at five was forty. And then the velocity at eight was negative one twenty. And then what's the third step? Do you remember? The number that I want has to be where? Between. Uh huh, and what's the number I want to prove that? Negative. So then I would say negative a hundred is between. Forty and negative twenty. Then can, uh, I promise that it's gonna hit negative a hundred? Yeah. And I would just put, if they ask you a yes or no question, like do the data in the table support? I would just put because then I V T guarantees this. And I wouldn't try to do the whole complicated binbo's thing. I would just put then I V T. Applies. Something like that. Because the way that they phrase the question is, does it have to equal negative a hundred? So your answer is just yes, I V T problem. Okay, so A was A raw, B was I V T. Okay, let's look at part C. It says at time two. The train's position is three hundred meters east of the origin. Then it says the train is moving to the east. Write an expression involving an integral that gives the position of the train. At time twelve. Okay? So let's unpack that. What's in the chart? The chart is. Velocity. And what do they want you to find? Position, is that a derivative or? That's an integral. So that's gonna be a version B. So do you remember this thing? F of B equals F of A. Plus the integral from A to B. Okay, so I know I have to integrate because they gave me velocity, but they're wanting me to find position. Okay? So let's set it up. What is the position that I have? The position at time. Two is what? Three hundred. So for part C. Let's write down, we want the position at twelve. We have the position at two. And then we're gonna integrate from two to twelve on the velocity chart. So this is what we want. This is what we have. And then we're gonna integrate between those numbers to see how much it would have. How am I gonna do? We know this is three hundred. How are we gonna do this? Go back and read the part again for part C. It has to give you an instruction on that if you don't have the equation. Okay, so right here, it says use a trapezoidal sum with the intervals indicated in the table. So then for this, I have three hundred plus, and then for this, I'm gonna do it. You would have to, um. Yeah, you would have to follow it. They tell you trapezoidal sum. And now what could they have told you besides the trapezoidal sum? Maybe a remon sum. But they'd have in a left or right. They'd have to tell you what. Okay, now go back up at your chart. Am I gonna use the whole chart? Where am I gonna do my integral from? Two to twelve. So what is not gonna be part of it? This, pretend it's not there. We're only going from two to twelve. So I'll have two to five. What's the width? Three, what about five to eight? Again, what about eight to twelve? Four. That means no short versions because they're not all. So let's do it. We're gonna do one half in the front. Then remember you add the Y values and then multiply by the width. So it'd be a hundred plus forty. And then a width of three. Then reuse forty plus negative twenty. Then your width is three again. But then your last one is the one that messed it up. It would be negative one twenty minus one fifty. But then you're with. Uh huh. If it could be short version, you do the one half and the delta X in the front. And then you do the first one, double the second one, double the third one. Blah, blah, blah. And then remember the last one, but only once. That would be if it was the short version. But remember, you can only do the short version when all your seven. And so that's not the case for this. Okay? Um, and then again, you don't have to add that up. Don't do it. You push the wrong button and you end up with the wrong answer, then you. Um, okay, last part, part D. Says you have a second train being traveling north from a train station. At time T, the velocity of train B is given by that equation. And at time two, it's four hundred meters north of the train station. Find the rate at which the distance between the trains is changing at time two. What does that sound like? A related. So set up your finds given when. There, and actually, let's draw a picture to go with it because I think it'll make it a lot easier. I'll have to do my work on a different paper, but. What way is train A going? Look back at part C. Let's say the station's here. This is the station. Okay, so A is going. So north, south, east, west. So train A is going this way. Which way is train B going? Train B is going north from the exact same train station. So that's train B. Then how will I know the distance between them? Okay, yes, but what equation could I? To relate these three sides to each other?
I don't think that's.
Well, so we are gonna need that, but I'm trying to get to the five. So they want us to find the rate. That the distance between the trains is changing. So we made a triangle. Let's say this is the. Well, then how would we know how fast this is changing? We're finding D C D T. But we were given how fast both of the trains are traveling. So how fast is train A going? At two. Look at your chart. So D A D T is going a hundred. I used the chart for that one. And then how will I know how fast train B is going? What did they tell me about B? That's where it is. But how fast is it going? What would I have to do with two? What did they give us in part D? They gave us the. The velocity. So then how, how will I know how fast train B is going at two, at two minutes? Plug it in. So negative five times two squared. Plus sixty times two. And then plus twenty five. So train B is going a hundred twenty five. So down in your little thing, make your D B D T be one twenty five. Okay, but that one, one of them, we had to look at the chart for velocity. The other one, we had to plug into an equation for velocity, but they're both. Okay, then what's your width? What were you saying?
So the given is not always like exactly given.
Yeah, this one, they gave it to in a really caky way. And that's why I think too, like parts A, B, and C were a little bit easier because part D was really hard. Yeah. Yeah. So your when is it time two? But I need to know where both the trains are at two. They told you that. Where is train A at two seconds? How far away is it? In part C, it tells you. Three hundred meters away. And where is train B at two minutes? Um, four hundred, uh huh? So then really, we know everything we need to know to do our related rate. So we're gonna start with the Thagorian theorem. A squared plus B squared equals C squared. Then we'll take the derivative, then we'll plug in all the crap. So it'll be A squared plus B squared equals C squared. What's the derivative of that? So it'd be two A and then what? Hold on, what came after the two A?
D A D.
Yes, D A D T plus. The reason why, oops. The reason why, and then your C squared would be two C. The reason why is because it says at time two. So if it's about time, you're taking the derivative with respect to time, then your A, your B, and your C, none of those are times. Just like if you're taking the derivative of Y stuff with respect to X, you have to put it Y D X. Because it's not an X. I'll show, I'll show you in a second. Then from here, what would you plug in? Two A is what? A is three hundred and then times one hundred. Two B is four hundred. D B D T is one twenty five. D C D T is what we're looking for, but then we don't know C. What would we have to do to go back and find C? Uh huh, and, and also Thagorian triple, right? Three, four, five? So if it's three hundred and four hundred, then you don't get satisfied. And then you would just finish it out. So it'd be two A is three hundred. D A D T is a hundred. Plus two B was four hundred. D B D T was one twenty five. Equals two C, which we just said was five hundred. D C D T. And then you would add this up and then divide. Two times a hundred times three hundred. Plus two times four hundred times one twenty five and then divided by. So D C D T is one sixty. And, and that one was tricky because they gave you all the pieces in like we, in other parts of the question. So I would say definitely that was not like a super easy.
Really. If I just.
Oh, that's, yeah. Okay, all good? Okay, so then I'll sign y'all's sheets, but do you want me to show you what I mean with the D Y D X? Um, so let's say you had something like this. I think on your home market. X squared plus X Y equals two or something like that. If you're taking the derivative with respect to time. It would be two X. D X C T. Here you would need a product rule. So your U would be an X. Your V would be a Y. So then what would your U prime be? And it would go to D X C T. What about Y? Oh, one. D Y D T, right? But it's not a T. If it's not a T, you have to put. Uh, D of that letter, D T F. And then you would do this plus that. So it'd be X D Y D T. If it's a T, basically everything. And then what with the derivative of zero, of two B? Okay, that's if you did it with respect to time. You would only do that with respect to time. If it's a related rate, let's say that it says find D Y D X. Well, then now all your Xs are regular. And you don't have to put the D S. Only for the one. Does that make sense? So this is a, a related rate is when it has to do with time. So if it says find D Y D X, I'll sign it. You're fine. Unless you're watching, but. I want you to do it correctly. So then what would the derivative of this be? Well, two X plus. And then when I come over to my product rule, what would I not need it? The derivative of X would just be, yeah. That would just be a one. Does that make sense? So it has to do with what you're taking the derivative with respect to. If you're doing it D Y D X. Then all the Xs are free. But if you do it with respect to time. Then any letter that's not a time, a T, you would have to put a D D T on that. Or it'd be X D Y D X. See you later, Matthew. It would say find the slope. Uh huh. So actually, and let's add that too. So this would be. Find D Y D X or it could say find the slope. Versus this might say. Um, at what rate? Is X changing? With respect to time. Or it might say, at what rate is the volume change with respect to time? Or what rate is the radius changing with respect to time? So it's that, it's the time part. That makes you have to leave a D D T on all the letters. But if it's a DX, like a slope on a graph. Then all the Xs are free. So when I set up my product rule, might use an X, then now you prime just the one. My V is a Y, oh, oh, then D prime is Q Y D X. But it has to do with what you're doing at work. Makes sense? Is it already full?